All right, it is seven thirty-one. I'll call the meeting to order if we could please stand for the flag.
The flag is to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this is the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five committee, the whole meeting of the Milford Board of Education, which is dedicated to a long-range facilities planning workshop. About to roll, Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Furman.
Present.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Koba.
Here.
Lauren Mahler.
Here.
Christina Preett.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Wolf-Whinton.
Here.
Susan Glennon here, none present. Thank you. So again, tonight is dedicated to a long-range facilities planning workshop where we're going to discuss the community conversation that we just had. So I will turn the meeting over to our facilitators, Mary Frieder and Jack Reynolds. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's nice to see you again. We hope to begin by having you talk about your impressions, those of you who were at the conversation with everybody except two. What did you think?
I thought it was really impressive how many folks showed up on a snowy Saturday to be part of the conversation. And just very encouraged about the conversations, the conversations that day and also subsequently of how excited people are for us to have this conversation.
Thank you. Yeah. So participation and excitement.
And appetite, yeah, appetite.
Ms. Preett?
I truly appreciated the respectfulness and the perspectives that came in, in my group and from what I understood from a lot of the other groups towards the end, there was a lot of just open-mindedness and no, not necessarily clinging to one way, but open-minded to hearing about other ways and other opportunities and pausing to listen and really take in and give feedback. There is one thing that I wish I think we could have hindsight. People think just go to Platt, you know, just go to Platt Tech as far as a specialty high school. And I don't think they know that, you know, number one, Platt takes him from all regions in the area. And then how many actually get in from Milford? I think they think anybody can go to Platt anytime, you know, and there's not, because it's a brand-new facility. It's beautiful. And I think we, not that that's necessarily, you know, that third high school idea, you know, I think people might have thought that preconception, preconceived notion that we have Platt. What are you talking about, you know? So, and that it is a limited attendance, a limited acceptance that Milford at least can have for Platt because they're taking from a regional area. But otherwise, no, I thought it was a great day. I loved, you know, hearing from people who were here for six months, two years, eight years, and then people who are, have been here, they went to school here and now their kids are going to school here. Grandparents who, you know, went, you know, went here and the legacy of that. But again, they were also so open-minded. Yeah.
I would say some of the same takeaways. I was very pleasantly surprised, A, at the turnout, again, snowy Saturday, that's unheard of, and it was fantastic to see. And the general interest in looking at change, the overwhelming interest from just about every single person that I talked to. I don't think I talked to anybody either in my group or in the rest of the time there or since who felt incredibly firm on the idea of don't touch anything. Everybody wanted to touch something. There may be some disagreements about what that thing is, but they weren't, nobody, again, anecdotally from my experience, was very married to any one particular solution. I was very surprised about that because based on some of our conversations here and based on, you know, just in general, sometimes the idea of change, immediately, what kind of change do you want? And immediately the answer is none. And that wasn't the case at all. And I found that very refreshing, given how much work we are all putting into trying to make smart choices about what change could look like, to actually have support for the idea of change. And obviously, all of that will change as this process unfolds and there are specific nouns and places and shapes to that change, and then more opinions will come out. But it was a really encouraging place to be starting from.
So yes, great day. A lot of people, I felt, in addition to what everyone else said, wanted a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers that they want now that will be very different from when things actually occur. But they want more numbers to work with. And I felt that whatever it is we do, they want the largest impact, as many kids as possible to be touched. And lastly, there's still a lot of people who don't know we're having a conversation, so.
Still many to reach.
I can't add much more. That's different. Just that there is definitely a desire for change and that technology isn't cutting it now in the buildings that we have and they can't support what we're doing long-term. There was a lot more openness to what was occurring versus we have to do what we're doing currently. That was one of my biggest takeaways. And it was nice to see many generations of people who had no children in the district or were connected another way and wanted to be there and ready to participate.
Tom?
I got a lot of similar comments from the people that were in my room. Like Ms. Doyle said, the great cross-section of people who are with and without students across the age boundaries and everything. What was common is they all cared. They were deeply, they were deeply looking for information. They were, you know, they were looking for options. Even on the items that were split fifty-fifty across the room, each side was willing to listen what the other side had to say. So it was very respectful. One of the, one of the things that came through is a lot of people just saw the notices and came to the meeting and didn't know where the information was. I pointed them to the website and things. But they were looking for exactly how much does each school need, how much work is needed in each building and impending repairs and things like that. They were really looking for about a three-page summary of the Veritas report is what it kind of boils down to. And they were really interested in not just the numbers of new planning, but how much risk do we have right now? I thought that was, again, that was a very common thread across, you know, the twenty or so people in the room. So in general, like everybody else said, you know, we had a great turnout for a snow day. So, yeah.
I had that same thought, Mr. Koba, about there were some people that came, it seemed like they were coming in midstream, so they didn't have a lot of the background information, even, not even, not just information about the work that we were doing, but basic information about the school district. And I don't know how we can grapple that, but with that, but I did notice that. And I think for my group at least, in terms of the third high school, I think people understood that we were in the district, there were some people that understood that we were trying to work towards career pathways and that when you, you know, adding another school that had a special track would kind of detract from the work that we had done and kind of watered down everything. I think that was more of the issue than from what I heard. But I think there were, and I heard a lot about the numbers too, people wanted the costs and stuff. So, but generally, very appreciative that we had engaged with them, which is the whole, whole purpose, so to engage with them.
I don't know whether anybody on staff wants to weigh in on any observations. I just have to commend the staff, Pam and the team that worked with Pam, all the administrators in the roles you took and the, you know, training of the facilitators who, I only saw a little bit of it, but it looked like it was really well done and you all knew what you were doing against and scribes. So you generated the culture and spirit so that people were respectful, did a really, just a really nice job in those roles. So, does anybody want to offer observations from staff? Putting me on the spot.
gentlemen?
I think, you know, the board captured it pretty well. You know, I thought that we weren't in the rooms during the debrief part of it, but hearing the summary conversations, there were a lot of similar themes that came out of that. And I thought that you could really tell that there was an engaged community that really was thinking, what could this community look like using all this different information? And it did seem like they had some questions about where to follow up on the next steps of information, which I think is some of the work that we're going to be engaging in, and just constantly keeping the community in mind with, as this progresses along. So how do we, how do we keep engaging the community?
So really wanting it to be an iterative process.
Exactly, exactly.
Which you're doing.
That was some of the information that it seemed like I was receiving from them. But it seemed like the next steps are really something that was intriguing to everyone and they wanted to find out how this is going to go and how to make this actionable.
I thought just the connections of people wanting to come in and match the programming needs with the facilities needs. I thought there was a lot of great conversation about supporting the future of our work here in Milford. I was also really impressed with how I think the board kind of captioned it, whether you were new to town, whatever your viewpoint was, everybody came together and was really respectful of everyone's dialogue, ideas and opinions. So it was great to see the conversations that transpired in each of the breakout rooms during that time.
I think I'll just sort of summarize what I'm also hearing from everyone is that I think that they reflected the culture and conditions that exist in the greater community of Milford, that within our schools, we have the culture where we could have open dialogue and conversation, whether we agree or not. Across our city, we could do that. So I feel like that was, there was a mirror of that, that morning. And you don't have a successful conversation if there isn't, if there aren't the conditions where people can respectfully and lovingly disagree, but still feel like they're part of one community, right? So we knew that there would be differing opinions that day, but it was, the conditions were ripe for having that dialogue out loud. So I think that reflects our greater Milford community, but also what exists in our four teen schools.
And one other observation that I observed and said to Jack later, and it came out also in the survey and the focus groups, is how many people in this community understand the big picture of what you're trying to do programmatically, understand the disconnect between the facilities and the program, as Sanfier said. I don't, I think that's rare that you have that kind of both awareness of and commitment to a direction. And I think that was loud and clear. I was in one small group with Mike, and it was certainly expressed there, but I think we heard it in some of the summaries as well.
So are you able to tell that sentiment to the city's marketing inventory department?
So the next thing we wanted to do is dig a little deeper on the summary, the summary of the summary. You received all of that in your packets. And it's the common ground, the disagreements, the questions and concerns of the next steps. I'm going to pull over a flip chart that asks you, what really came up for you out of that? Were there some high-level takeaways and then some nuance from, from that?
Yeah. It's a little high level, but it's also nuanced is that the desire is clear that there's not, people, I'll move that away so it don't contribute, that there's a consistent desire to maintain small classrooms. And we have to, I don't want to say pushback, but we have to disengage the idea that a large school means that we will have large classroom sizes. So taking that away is that we are going to still have the guidelines which guide the, our classroom size. So regardless of if there are a hundred kindergarteners, we're not going to have more than X in a classroom. So understanding that they're disconnected.
So disconnect the school size, class size issue. Thank you.
I have two. I think no third high school was pretty consistent throughout and cost and land availability.
And land availability, the issue of.
The cost overall to do anything, which again, we'll get to, but then land availability to do anything they might want to do.
Right. Mike?
The status quo is not sustainable, or I heard, I don't think I heard anyone say that they wanted to keep it exactly as it is, either in the summary, in either the summaries or in any conversation.
No.
I was not there, but from this document, one of the things, one of my takeaway was that, that there is a, there is a willingness to change as long as there's good communication to go along with it. And it's not like a last-minute thing.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to add to some of these because I think it's the same, it's like, it's not a reaction, it's a play.
Yes, exactly.
What was that?
The chairs. We were talking about chairs.
I didn't fall over backwards, but I came close. Yeah, just know.
There's one trick chair. It's always in this corner somewhere.
We keep it rotating to keep them on their.
Nobody likes to have changes sprung on them, do they? Everybody needs time to anticipate what's going to be.
There's also a history of that that was brought up.
Yeah.
Some folks have been around and not doing that again. I think another one I saw, and we had mentioned it going around, but I want to make sure it gets onto the sheet, was wanting to connect the programming and the intent of what's going to go on inside the building with the actual structure of the building. So wanting to link physical facilities and actual programming. And that came out in a bunch of different ways related to technology infrastructure, related to flexible furniture, related to movable walls, related to all kinds of things.
So physical structure with program needs, right?
Right, aligned to the program needs. And somewhere in there, I don't know if it's a separate bullet or part of that one, was that an acknowledgement that programs will adapt and evolve and the building needs to do so as well.
Yeah.
Okay, to build on the evolution of buildings, there were a few people who did mention that if not this physical, I believe this physical brick and mortar, but this used to be Milford High, certainly the campus used to be Milford High back in the day. So we have had the ability to make significant changes in our education system over the decades.
Yeah. You know, what's interesting is I think about those rooms with the flexible walls and no, no windows. And I'm sure they were built that way to maintain flexibility, and yet they don't work.
Right.
So you've got to find that right balance between that adaptable or aligned and, and flexible that works. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, our group was having that conversation as we noticed we were in a room of cinder block walls.
Yeah. But then I think if you talk to people at Foreign, which has that exactly, no windows in a lot of them, some.
And that's a problem.
Prison windows. Prison, like windows up at the top. I remember that in high school.
Or no windows.
Yeah, no windows are, it seemed like kind of prison slots.
The walls that can move around.
And the noise from the next one.
Yeah, it's not great. So I heard a willingness to, or a willingness, I don't know how to word it, a willingness or an understanding that we need to consolidate buildings. And I think I heard, you know, people seemed okay with considering going down to two middle schools and understood that, you know, eight elementary schools was not really sustainable.
So okay with consolidation?
Maybe some disagreement in where that was going to come from, but the idea of it.
Right, exactly.
On that same note, a lot of people said, if you're going to reconsolidate and move things around, they'd be okay with it as long as it wasn't going to be a sudden thing. It was obviously planned out, you know, make sure you have a building ready before you close and all the one, you know.
So I think I missed the last.
And elementary, you know.
And fewer elementary.
And fewer elementary schools, right.
Would it be connected to that? Because every time that consolidation concept came up, and I've seen it in other groups' comments as well, was the idea of we'd have to redraw the lines.
Right.
That those things have to go, obviously have to go hands in hand, but the idea that those things have to be connected and go hands in hand was a, oh, moment for a lot of people.
Yes. The, what I thought was a clear theme was making sure that the schools were all similar, so that the programming was the same across the board.
Parity.
Parity, yes.
Parity across the.
Equitability.
Parity, parity is a good word.
Parity is a better word. And that was, I was surprised at the high school level discussion, when I mostly thought about the middle school and elementary school levels and parity.
And I think that it was a wide-reaching idea of parity. So, you know, not just programming, but class sizes and building sizes and things like that.
And access to excellence and, yeah, that was very much part of it. And again, it was another one of those cases where I thought this community has really heard the importance of this.
I think the parity was also an interesting issue at high school level. That was, and as a law graduate, I didn't really think about it, but Foreign does have the pool, they, this planetarium, which I don't love the idea, but the pool and some other activities. And so that was, and music areas as well.
Yeah, yeah. And the crowding in the music area at law.
Yeah.
The next part about the parity and also in conjunction with the one or two high schools was the idea that if, if there's a reduction to Harborside, so you have four elementary schools, two middle schools and two high schools, you have an east side of town school district and a west side of town school district. And there's no, not that Harborside is the solution to that, but it definitely underscores the importance of parity across the district when there is that east-west side of town divide.
So Harborside buffers it. Or is there a good word? Harborside.
On paper, it buffers it. I'm not sure. I heard from anyone who thinks it actually.
The removal of it, it draws starker contrast to the different sides of town. That's probably a different way to say it.
Makes parity issue more apparent.
I was surprised at how many people just accepted the fact that there was a complete disparity across the district right now and that this was our chance to do something about it. Because it wasn't going to change otherwise.
I'm at, I'm at the flip chart, so spelling doesn't count, but tell me how to spell apparent. Is it one P or two?
No, you got it right.
It was just on the same parity conversation. I was surprised at how many people just accepted the fact that the status quo is not a level of parity that is, it's just not. It's very unequal and that this was the opportunity to finally change that because it wasn't.
Accepted or aware of it?
Specifically accepted. Like they seemed not in agreement, I intentionally chose the word accepted because they seemed to just be accepting of the situation.
Oh, okay.
They didn't like it, but they were accepting of it. Just, that's how it is. This is our chance to change that.
That would be in terms of things like two of our elementary schools don't have dedicated media centers, that kind of thing.
Did it get down to that level of specific as much as this side of town, that side of town? Yeah, we all know it's not even. Like we all know it's not going to be, it's not equitable now. This is, what can we do to change that?
Specifically with this side and that side of town, do you think? That's interesting.
I don't know if we've, we've touched on it a little bit, but really, technology and making sure the schools are able to generally accept technology, whether it's Wi-Fi working well, enough plugs.
So it's technology as a barrier right now to learning, that sort of the awareness that technology is, the buildings limit the use of technologies.
Technological infrastructure kind of thing.
Yeah.
Access to outlets, all those things.
So program delivery, right?
Yes.
And maximizing the potential of tech.
Yes.
Anything else before I share? I have a document with you. I know you've had summaries on summary, but this is a summary of.
Of what?
Of the summary, of the summary.
This is the executive, executive summary?
And I will be very transparent. I just took the summary and I fed it through AI and said analyze for themes. And this is what I came up with. And you know, sometimes I just shake my head and say, this is simply amazing stuff. I'll look this over for a minute. Why don't you start with common ground? You definitely see some of the themes that you've just raised. So two and three, you've just read, and four.
And five.
And five.
And seven. I would say we didn't mention transportation.
And it was two groups. So when it says two mentions, it's the number of, of the groups that came back and reported them. Okay, so how about disagreement? Okay, so how about disagreements? Any surprises there?
I don't think it's a surprise. I think that there was, to me, a much bigger embrace at the one high school because it was part of this conversation of moving things forward. Is that we have to take a next step and what is that next step?
I didn't hear that at all, that there was leaning one way or the other. I, I heard very clear, kind of fifty-fifty.
My group was overwhelmingly ball.
Yeah, mine wasn't. Mine was very split down the middle.
I was surprised that it was even fifty-fifty, honestly.
Well, it's here as a disagreement, right?
Right, yeah.
And there are seven mentions of it. And I, I know the group I was in was pretty positive about the idea of one, too. So, there are at least a couple of groups that had a lot of people there ready to go with one high school. And a lot of, a lot, but most of the groups cited.
How many groups were there altogether?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten, so seven of the ten.
The renovation versus new construction, I felt, so that was an, an area where I felt some people had a little bit of a disconnect and hadn't really, didn't have the background information because they were kind of missing the, the purpose of this is that we've got old buildings and we can keep dumping money into these old buildings and they're gonna still be old buildings. So, like, they seem to, I mean, putting so much of an emphasis on the cost of renovation, the cost of renovation is gonna be less than the cost of building a new building, I think, I think, but maybe not, but.
Well, in the short term, right, in the short term.
And, but, missing that point that we still have buildings that don't meet the needs of programming today. You know, I still go back to that information that I learned for the first time that when, if you're to build a new building today, your classroom is gonna, the square footage of the classroom is gonna be larger because of the evolution of education. And kids don't sit still at their desks anymore, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What does number five mean?
I think that is the constant, the flexibility, flexibility in school design. I mean, I think that's what we were talking about before, about ensuring that there was the, the ability to adapt as the program evolves.
So, what would be the disagreement there?
Yeah. Did anybody notice that?
There shouldn't be flexibility in the design.
There was just disagreement.
So, there's parity?
Our, our conversation, the closest to that was the concept of future-proofing it and trying to build more now to save the need to renovate in the out years. And I don't remember explicit disagreement on that, but I know we had a conversation about future-proofing.
That could be somebody who didn't like blocks of walls. And it got rid of them.
And would have to dig back into the data to see what the disagreement was. Questions and concerns, that's where we need to spend a little bit of time to generate where, what information that you still need to gather and we can do that. And then next steps also. People want to be engaged, as was said earlier, under next steps. They want more, they definitely want you to check back with them in that iterative approach. They want that detailed cost analysis. And condensing options, I think that's something you could, you're probably ready to do tonight. Okay? And address the transition and long, uh, transition grades and long-term planning. So, AI generated some themes. Strong consensus against having three high schools. Emphasis on maintaining small class size while ensuring parity across schools. Cost considerations and community engagement. Disagreements, one or two high schools. And balance between renovation and new construction. And then emerging concerns, the long-term viability of decisions. So, that is really about looking at what makes the most sense in terms of what you're building when, the cost, yeah, cost effectiveness and all that you need. Okay. Any surprises in the summary of the summary of the summary? Okay.
I'm sorry. Mine is the mental health and bullying concerns. Because I think what is, while I, they are valid, important aspects of our, of the mission and everything that we need to do as a district, I think it also conflates this idea of larger school means less resources and yet. And so, I think we encounter that sometimes where one person might be doing the work at multiple, multiple schools, having less schools allows them to be able to better focus in a singular or two schools.
So, you're saying that, again, it's the need to disconnect the concept of, you know, small, small class size means small school. Mental health services.
Right.
Is not a disconnect with larger.
Right. But if we stay as best status quo and we have one district council, we say, say we have eight elementary schools, we continue. We have school counselors in eight elementary schools. We budgeted for eight counselors in eight elementary schools.
Right.
If we only, if we have six elementary schools, we could make, we could have more for the same cost, the same, more counselors for the students in a, able to focus.
So, others may remember this conversation, but my recollection was that people are afraid that when you get into large schools, that.
There's more bullying and more.
I was gonna say that. That's what came out of our group and that's what I, that's the theme that I heard. It wasn't so much about the services. Because when you're talking about those kind of services, you're, you're looking at the caseload versus.
Right.
But it was more that, when you, the more kids you put together, the more opportunity there is for that kind of bullying and less opportunity, potentially, you know, less ability for the adults in the room to have eyes on everybody. That's what I, I took out of that.
But that still fits with your, with the not enough staff to support the students. If there's not enough eyes in the larger classroom or things like that.
Well, I think the bigger the school, the, I mean, you have the economy of scales, which, the whole point of that is that as schools expand, you can have less staff.
Right.
Because losing the staff more efficiency, efficiently in certain circumstances, but.
But there's economies of scales of other things that are not staff-related.
And also, there's economies of scale and diversity of student population. Like, there was Malcolm Gladwell has a part about how, like, the punk rock kids save lives because if you're in a homogeneous school of all kids who excel, the kids who don't feel isolated and ostracized versus when you have more and no more people, you have the ability to find your different groups.
So, it's a cost benefit. You have to see, it's like a balancing effect.
Yes, that's what it all is, the balance.
And if you don't have people who are different from yourself, you don't learn how to get along with a variety of people too, right? So, if you're limited in terms of those cultural options, yeah. Okay, versatility to find your people.
Yeah.
I think that part right there falls into, as many of the other things do, when we start getting more away from facts on the ground and we get into emotions about ideas. That's one of the things that falls into that category of perception is not reality.
Yeah.
And you get a lot of people who went to a small school that are convinced that if they were in a big school, it would be the end of the world. And people who are in big schools who would never want to be in a tiny school. And it all just depends on what your experience was before and whether or not your experience was good, bad or otherwise, and therefore that must be what your kid has. And that's not necessarily always the case. And it doesn't mean the other options are wrong or bad. This means they're different and it takes some adjusting.
Can you call that an emotional?
I call it an emotional perception.
Perception, yeah. All right, so, this point. Jack, can you, yeah, you're gonna take it through the next step?
I don't know yet. I guess so. I come from the dirty end of the stick in some ways. I don't want to deal with, with cost and I don't want to deal with construction. But I'd like to at least suggest, in the consideration of various things, that you at least look occasionally, this is just background, it's not what I'm doing. But consider 2025 and 2045. My wife and I were holding our eight-week-old granddaughter the other day. And there's another one that's two and a half and she's off the walls. But the infant is what we're doing. We're preparing schools for eighteen years from now. She'll be graduating from high school in eighteen years. So, at least when we think about this, whatever we're talking about, think in terms of twenty years. Because if we're gonna do a long-range plan, I tend to think we're gonna have to look at, where are we in five, where are we in ten, where are we in fifteen and where are we in twenty? And at least if we're thinking that way, cost is gonna be different. Construction's gonna be different. I have these nervous feelings. We've talked, and especially Mary and I have talked with Sean about any slide we had, when bond issues retire. We'll have to get into that a little bit because sometimes you can build schools right. At least the taxes don't change. The taxes from previous bonds are retiring. And that's the time to get even, as opposed to doing it at a peak. Now, you're really in trouble. So, at least, as a framework reference, just like we said before at the very beginning, let's think of the ideal. I think that's what the common ground said. The first thing that came out was think about kids. You may not be able to do it, but it's really not about parents' funding. It's not about government. It's not about boards of it. It's not about administration. It's about kids. And then you get to what's best for the town of Milford twenty years from now. And all I know is inflation will happen, forget that too. But we'll need to look at, I think, what the cost is. Let me, let me do something else. What do we want to eliminate? Do you want to eliminate some? We're at four options. I think the data shows, the data.
Show.
I think the data, they show that there was some negatives and I think I've heard them. And I think you people as a group are much more in harm right now than you were at previous times we've been here. I just have to say, I, my, my perspective of the meeting, the community conversation, you've got a very bright community. Granted, where is it representative? I kind of think it is. But there are top ones going on out here and what's going on in research. When I read the AI reports, I thought, sure, educational research was included in the database. It wasn't. Mary fed in only the data from the surveys and focus groups. I couldn't believe that it came out like that, as it did. It had a very, very well-learned, educated, what do you call it, but a bright community.
Savvy.
Savvy, yeah, I mean, they're on top of their data. So, do we want to seek us going to fewer? Are we ready to eliminate?
I think so.
I, I think that's a huge step and I think it's time to do that. And, you know, when you think, I guess our target is roughly three months from now. We need to do some tough stuff. So, please, what are we gonna eliminate?
Three high schools.
Please, people be able to read it, probably.
Sorry, well-approached three.
Never say never. I was able to be a scribe and people could read my handwriting.
That should have been a reflection of the class.
For the most part, there's definitely still.
In front of the group and was like, I don't know what that says.
Well, you know, that's option number three. Yeah, three high schools.
What's the other one, I think you said, the status quo?
Number one.
Right.
I think, is that number one? Yeah. I think, I don't think we're, we're not doing anything overly brainy here. The data showed that, you know? I mean, it really, it really did. So, that brings us down to two, which is going to be fun to wrestle with because sooner or later, we're gonna need to deal with those conversations on the limitation. Land isn't having, Fosca's there and what's the motto or the mascot of the football team? But really, I mean, I've seen pals kill each other over, or what's the mascot of the football team?
Do we still have three?
Three, because we do still have three, because we still have the middle.
One A, two and four are left.
We have one A, two and four.
No, we got rid of one A.
Which is what?
Which is status quo with, like, the.
That's one.
With, losing a couple of, of elementary schools. So, we, that's two separate options, though. One was status quo where nothing changes.
Right.
We eliminated that. One A was status quo, high school, middle school, down to six elementaries. We've not yet eliminated that.
I'm sorry.
That was me. I said, we got rid of it because we hadn't, it was the status quo, which is to change the.
It's not a status quo because it's closing two elementary schools, which is different from.
Well, then Carly already could have gone with every one of the options, just.
Right. We're into the land of permutations now, so it just depends on what we're looking at and what's left.
In my head, I, I'm saying one high school and two high schools, like, two options. And then, I think, I, I mean, I, we have to hear from the board on this, but the middle school piece, I, I, I think I heard some consensus during the community conversation on the middle school piece.
Right, I heard that too.
With two middle schools, two middle schools, which would be two middle schools under each option. And then a discussion about, at some point, how many elementary schools we need.
Yeah, before we totally lock down the two middle schools, I'm not sure. I've got enough of the consensus to sign up for two quite yet.
Okay.
I know I'm just one, but I'm just one person. I'm short about two middle schools. But, leaning that way, but we'd like to maybe dig a little bit more and leave that one on the table for now.
And I think that would, what would feed into that is to know, to get into what we're, know we need to get into is the numbers.
Yeah.
Right? Because we know we've had additions on East Shore, West Shore in the last several years and we've beefed those up. But now we need to understand in order to further the decision or further the thinking on Harborside as is and what it could be. And I think that might help going forward. So, yeah, I agree, though.
Still on the table.
Still on the table, but we need to know more, yeah.
Discussion stuff.
Yeah, and, and to that point, one of the people in my group was very concerned about if we did do that consolidation to two middle schools, that his child with special needs, as he's coming up and projected to go there, would have the same amount of services at either of the consolidated ones. So, I'm sure we, the answer is yes, but to the point of like additional conversations and making sure there's those.
But that's a suspicion if you reduce schools or reduce stuff.
No, not necessar, like, it ties into some of those other things we've talked about, but it was just a very explicit one that I just wanted to make sure that that was one of the.
There are a lot of considerations that go into the middle school question to be considered.
I, I, I mean, it's options, but the next part is the elementary schools. And I just think we don't generally have enough information about the elementary school level because it's complex of, more than just the, two schools have not had renovations on our, and where we would go in terms of like an order or what's recommended. I don't think we have the skills to necessarily say that five is better than six or seven or four. Like, I don't think we have the information to make a plan related to the schools.
Because we do have a little bit of numbers.
Yeah, I think we can lean into it a little bit in terms of. In terms of looking at the projection of the enrollment and coming up with an idea of what size elementary school we think is appropriate. That would tend to then narrow down. What I don't think as a board, we have the expertise to do would be to then design a plan. I mean, the high school and the middle school piece are kind of black and white. But to design a plan on attacking the middle, elementary school piece once we decide on a number.
Right.
In terms of, you know, where do you start and how do you, you know, do you have swing space? Do you? And that's where I think we might need to bring in another demographer type of person to help us work through that piece, which would be down the road, I think, you know, it's not. And, I mean, we might even come, get to the point where we have a concept of the elementary school piece and then we have to solidify the concept at some point using some, somebody who can help us with the boundaries and those types of things. and those types of things.
Can we minimally say, no, not eight?
Yes, I think we simply do.
Agree with that one.
Oh, yes.
Three months.
I think we should think about six. That's my.
That's good. Really getting it. What do you need? What sort of data? What sort of research? What sort of stuff?
We can, we can probably go to a window of options because when we talked before, we said four was too few. So anything less than that is also too few. So I can't remember if we said four or five we thought would be too few. So that does put us at either six or seven.
I think so.
Or five. Did we say five?
I can't remember if five was too few or four was too few.
We have been talking about those numbers. I think six was the lowest.
Yeah, we kept saying six to eight, and we just took off eight. So let's say six to seven.
I had done the math.
I think so. That sounds right for me.
Yeah.
I can't remember hearing seven.
I don't remember seeing seven.
So I had done this math the last time we met. I think I mentioned this. Projected out, elementary school projection is two thousand six hundred and sixty-two. So if you divide by six, seven, and eight, you come up with an average, just an average. So six is four hundred and forty-four. Seven is three hundred and eighty. And that's pre, that is pre-K five projection. So I would lean to six. I would lean towards six. Maybe five, but.
Distinction between six and seven, I feel like, is like the middle schools. I don't feel like I have quite enough information to distinguish six from seven personally.
In terms of what?
Taking one or the other off the table.
So six or seven elementary schools, is that where we're at?
I think at that same point to Lauren, I think then we can come to the question of five. So like six, seven, five.
But I think we had looked at five and decided that wasn't gonna work before.
I didn't think we would.
They would be averaging over five.
Yeah, I think.
Because every range that we gave was six to eight because anything less than that was gonna be too few.
Six to eight was the average?
Yeah.
Right. But then we just took eight off the table. So that leaves us with six and seven.
Can we get maybe a sense of how many are leaning towards six?
I don't know.
I'm still in the numbers.
I'm gonna raise my hand for whatever you say because I don't know enough.
Right, yeah. Six and, I don't, I think.
We're gonna need to get some clarity around this. There is a proposed next community conversation date. We're thinking about March first, which is pretty soon. So we have a meeting on February twenty-fourth, I believe. And I hope it was okay to say that. Is that okay to say?
Yeah. But it's up to the board as to what their next steps would be.
I think you were looking at options in terms of.
We're just looking at options. Yeah. So I think we could end the meeting with what does the board want to do next and when? So.
And what do you need? What can we chase down? What are you looking for?
Homework assignment for us. Right.
Yes, I think there's gonna be lots of homework between now and then, yes.
So I know that I'm just one and that doesn't matter. I'm less, I'm less on the definitely dropping down from eight, but pulling up the, pulling up the current, the K five actual enrollment. Like, there's one elementary school with a hundred and eighty-two and one elementary school with three hundred and sixty-eight. So I think there's just gonna be redistribution.
There's that pumpkin delight that also has the early childhood program.
Right.
Just has a little sum, doesn't, I mean, they, we have the early childhoods in several schools.
Right. But I think it brings it up to almost three hundred.
Well, but looking at the pre-K enrollment is the point. So like, if your question is, I'm less, I think the question of consolidating facilities comes after the fact of maybe redistributing redistribution. And then does that still, and then tied into the what facility renovations would need to happen and all those other things. So it's that.
Can we set the issue at eight if we just redistribute?
Yeah, or like, it's one of those many variables goes into the outcome. And I'm not as sold on the consolidation before digging down on some of the variables that goes into that, so. But I'm only one.
You know, just in thinking forward, I hope we can, we can get to the point of kids go to something better, not that kids go to something worse.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because if it's something that's attractive, even if you feel really good about that school, Harborside, if they're going to something clearly, whatever school, at least as a parent, I want my kid going to an improvement, not going to an older building, not going to a whatever. That's worth keeping in mind because that probably has to do with renovation and replacement and construction. A crazy story, when I was in Amherst, they built a beautiful elementary school and then did the same thing, kept the architecture, kept the blueprints, and built the same building. One can say one hecka lot of architectural issues if you find out this is a good school.
For me, stay with eight elementary schools is the status quo that people said is, you know, so that, and I, that also negates the whole notion that we still have old buildings that we want. I think, you know, suggesting that we build eight new elementary schools is, or even seven, when you have, when you have pumpkin delight as a building that we probably just did it. We, that's the school that we're gonna keep, so.
At least part of it is, right?
Correct, well, correct, yes. But I, I think, you know, the whole point of this is trying to have a more efficient school district, you know, more efficiency in operations. And the only way we're gonna do that is by consolidating schools.
And greater equity or greater parity.
I mean, you can redistribute the enrollment in any way you want to. I don't, I don't see that as being the issue with this, that, you know, the enrollment is unbalanced. The issue is that we have old buildings, so.
The enrollment will catch up to whatever the footprint is.
Well, I mean, you.
Yeah, it'll get redistributed based on how many buildings exist.
Yes, correct, yes.
Yeah, so that piece comes later.
Yes, I agree.
Yep. One request we have, as board members say, I'm going to need more before I weigh in, or can we be more specific so we can start getting the list of things?
That's what I was hoping would be generated right at this point, right back.
So that's just how, how do we proceed to come up with that data? I think it's each person, what is it you'd like to know?
What specific information do you need so that we're able to move this forward in a plan that we could then bring back to the community? And bringing it back to the community, you want to make sure it's a, it's sort of a scenario with the information that they've asked for as much as possible, right?
I think if we can start with the high school level, might be the easiest is for the one, if we were to go towards a one high school, I'm removing this whole question of land because then it'll be something that would be an issue, which we don't have to address at this moment.
Unless you, one way you could address it is to ask the town to identify land. You don't need to identify the land.
Right. Right, but it's a conversation of are we purchasing land or things like that? There was an article in the paper today which said there are twenty percent open space in the city of Milford. Granted, that is, could be on disparate places across the city of Milford. Doesn't mean it's all together, but there is land somewhere. It's this morphous somewhere land. So I think in one high school, I think the idea of how many, what, how many square feet is in it? How many students would be comfortably fit within that school? What kind of programming would be in there? What is a general cost of that? A timeline of how long it would take?
Okay, you could.
I have, I think you're, you're getting a little bit too much into the weeds with some of that because the, how many kids are gonna fit in? We're gonna fit in as, you're gonna build and dig up to fit all the kids of just one high school. And the programming piece is, again, we're talking about the building itself. You build the building to fit the programming. So if we go to one high school, so.
But I don't think people are understanding the difference between what is a law? What is a foreign at two high schools of the disparity between the two or the comparison, not even disparity, just a comparison?
That comes into the difference between the renovation cost and the building new cost. So it's, which is, I think, what people were saying. How much, how much is it gonna cost to renovate the buildings versus building a new one in terms of the high school piece?
One thing I heard was that we are never going to be able to make law equal to foreign, no matter how much money we put into law to get to that same level. So I don't, I don't know. Like, so then we don't have to do any of that information?
A single level of what? I don't, it's not gonna have a pool, and it's not gonna have a, and it's not gonna have a planetarium. So what else is?
What? Whether both schools have, don't have music accessibility? What, what do we? I think it's hard for us to think about what are the programming needs that need to bring law and foreign to relative parity?
Isn't that, what's in the Bureau Veritas report?
But it's not side by side, like a definitive, this would be this, this would take this. I mean, we are spending money currently at law and foreign to bring them to parity on certain aspects. But that doesn't mean they're still equal in the long term.
But the BV report took into consideration the programming.
Yeah.
So we went back and forth, add programming, not. And so we landed on it has to include programming. So when you consider, and I haven't looked at that in a few months, so.
Right.
But there is a disparity, like the chorus room at law is smaller than this room. And the program is two to three times bigger than the one at foreign. And foreign has adequate like drama theater spaces. So in that area, you would have to invest more money at law to bring up that program. So that's just one example.
But is that included in the report?
That's why I said I can't remember, but I think it is.
I think what I took away from our community conversation was that the information's extremely complicated, and it needs to be distilled in a much more palatable way. And so this, having a simple document, I think Mike said about law, foreign, left or right, where are we here, comparison, is kind of distill some of that information of from the Bureau Veritas documents.
And I think building on that, like, one of the things, I think it'd be helpful, and I, in the conversations, I heard there was a lack of understanding of what our, even the, there is a wealth of information, but like, doing an executive summary, even if it's a few page, and then being able to have further one-pagers. And I think one of the things it's important to call out is what our, what our annual carrying costs are on facilities and current projections, including some of the liabilities we have for law. Like, last summer when we had to, when the HQI got moved because the chiller at foreign went down. And we know, we have old buildings with old facilities. And one of the things that, as we're two high school, one school considering is a new high school would mean that you don't have these impending long-term, like deferred liabilities that will have to be replaced in the short term, like the boilers, the chillers, all that stuff that we've been deferring and doing a really good job of maintaining, but that bill's coming due in the next five or 10 years. And having this conversation without awareness of those things, I think is doing a disservice to the taxpayers.
At least within the twenty years, it's going to.
Right, right.
That's exactly what I said earlier. We need to somehow figure out a way to skinny it down to make it easily digestible, at least.
It's gonna cost a lot to do nothing, it's gonna cost a lot to do something. They might be the same, it's just, where one way costs more than the other, but it's.
It may not, we may not know the answer to that without a real calculation on that time.
I feel like on the high school question, this is gonna be a little bit from a different direction here. The conversations that I've heard around the one school versus two schools are all conceptual. They're not cost. The conversations about elementary schools or middle schools, where do we put them? Do they go here? Do we update this wing of this school to become this, that? Those are where the questions of cost start coming in. For me, the question of do we, is Milford a one-high school or a two-high school town is not based on cost. It's based on philosophy, emotion, perception, feeling. Just all of those intangible things go into philosophically, are we a one-high school or a two-high school town? And then everything else falls down from there and your various, we just made eight distinct plans based on the options that we put up up there. So that was really good, moving in the right direction. But at least they are specific. But if you look philosophically at the, are we a one-school or a two-school town? The various options from that answer are specifically based on cost to renovate or build or close, or what to do with, or opportunity costs of not doing one or the other. So to me, the, I don't need financial information about the high school piece. That's a philosophical question. I am more interested in information and financial cost based on, okay, if we close a school and we put people over here, what has to change to this building to make that happen? What has to happen in this facility to be able to account for whatever else? So as we're, as we're talking about the specifics around building a high school, it goes back to a little bit of what someone was saying, I think Sue Huber was saying of, it's jumping the gun in a way because that is the foundational philosophical piece that will then dictate what everything else looks like.
And then also, what else, what comes into play with a new school, whatever it may be, high school, and what state contribution? How do we even know how that works? You know, is there a formula or is there?
There's a formula today.
Okay.
It may not be tomorrow. But there's also the, in many cases, your state representatives will work with the community to increase the percent of reimbursement.
Okay.
So it's very fluid, I think. It will, that's something that will be very hard to factor into this because.
As of right now on the website, it's twenty-six point seven nine percent for new and thirty-six point seven nine percent for renovated, for reimbursement.
State reimbursement?
Yes.
Is renovate as new an option anymore? They used to have renovate as a new option. So literally, you would get more money for going down to the walls and rebuilding everything.
Yeah. That would just be as max of the thirty-six point seven nine.
That's what I read.
Can we talk about this land issue for a second? So if we're going to put time and energy into researching the option of building one big new high school from scratch, shouldn't we make sure we have a place to put it first? Or the possibility of a place?
I guess the question also is, I view it as, up until I saw the article a few weeks ago that Bridgeport Flyers now becoming condos, I didn't think Bridgeport Flyer was on the market, right? It's, so if there's an appetite, you can find a location. So if there's a lot of land in Milford, it might be cost prohibitive when you get down to negotiations. But usually you have to have a vision and then you figure out based on the budget. That's kind of how I've seen it happen.
I, I don't, I don't know. Like, I, I'm not convinced. I don't know, first of all, I don't know how decisions like that are made. I would imagine that for a high school, that for the size that we would need, there would be so many things, everything from the soil that was there to its proximity with marshland to.
Whether it's, the land is buildable, do you mean?
Thank you. Whether the land is buildable to whether there are roads in place. I'm thinking up, you know, in northern Milford by the golf course, you know, there might be land perhaps up there, but it's definitely not the most accessible part of town to get to. So I.
This is not a question that you can answer. So is it a question that you ask of the town parents? Not to imply you're not, but.
Actually, you could, yeah, you could ask like, is.
Depends on who you ask.
Right. I mean, I guess you could ask the question. You could also ask, what is the, I guess, the importance of centrally located, right? So for me, living on that part of town, it takes me five minutes to get to foreign high and twenty-five minutes to get to Jonathan Law. And so the question is like, there's, it's a big town, there's a lot of land.
So I know when we were building, the town was considering any possible parcel of land anywhere in, in the town and had that in their heads and knew where they'd need to negotiate, knew where the land was theirs and they could just work it. You've been asked by the people who participated in that conversation not to rule out one high school until you check these things out. So let's move forward and figure out how to check it out, okay? So wouldn't you need to ask the town, I mean, saying, we have been asked to consider whether one high school is feasible. Can you identify any land that would be appropriate for use? Is that something you're ready to do? Ask the town whether there's land?
I would think so.
You're not gonna grow any more land because you know in twenty years from now. So if land is a problem now, it's gonna be a hell of a problem in twenty years.
Just as a data point, I think we would need probably about thirty-five acres approximately. Just as a data point, I think we would need probably about 35 acres approximately, based on the size of what that high school would be.
How many does law have?
Law has 31.7 and foreign has 26.4.
And you only need 30.
I think you can put aside land and, you know, maybe you have to replace law. You got the land. I don't ask you exactly about your time that, because one's got to go down and the other one's got to go up. But those are not the issues for tonight. It's what's best for the kids, what's best for the town.
We obviously would have to build a larger high school if it was going to be one.
And I, right. And I, I remember from the last conversations about law, and foreign, back when we had this conversation 10, 12 years ago, the property at law can't, it's too, too much wetlands and you can't really, it's not, there's no more buildable area around law because of wetlands. So.
Built up. That's generally the way to go.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Sean, you said 36.5 acres.
For which one?
Thirty.
For that would be needed, 35 acres.
Approximately 35 acres.
35 acres.
And that's based on.
Wouldn't you need more than that?
The number acres that we are having.
Loss 31.7.
Loss 31.7, foreign's 26.4.
And those are including the athletic fields?
Those are including athletic fields.
And parks.
So wouldn't you think you'd need more than 35 acres for one, if you are doing just one school?
So.
I'm surprised that it only needs 4 acres.
Minimum, yeah. Minimum of 35.
Yeah, minimum 35 probably. But that would be like, if you were thinking of the way to build it, you wouldn't necessarily need to build.
Okay, go up, that's right.
So those acres would really be more about parking, fields, things of that nature, because you could build it in a way that you're not sprawled out.
They built it inside of a little parking garage.
So what other information do you, do you need to, as, as that group was talking about ruling out one high school, what else do you need to consider? What other information have you not yet got that you need to know, whether you, you can rule it out?
For me, I feel like, again, I don't need data points, I need input. I need opinions. I need to hear from more people, again, over, we heard from all the folks who showed up before, there was a way to get more, just general feedback on the idea. Because if it is a philosophical question, then we need to hear from a wider selection of the community about their.
So the, I think the idea is that the next conversation, you would bring back to them information about what it would cost to invest in a new high school versus what it would cost to ensure that the two high schools do what they need.
To get that feedback at that point.
Yeah.
Because you need to present them more information.
I didn't really, I was surprised at the community conversation that I didn't hear more about the philosophical and emotional aspect of one versus two. It was pretty much cut, came down to dollars and cents. Not, I mean, I didn't, I don't remember hearing anybody say, oh my God, you, you know, that's, that's the craziest idea I've ever heard. You know, Milford's a two high school town. I don't think I heard that.
The people had their opinions and the people who have opinions about one school versus two school, don't hold those opinions today because they've already done the cost
So they need a cost analysis. People need a cost analysis. That's what they asked for.
Trust me if we want more stuff and I don't, so. Next. Somebody else may, someone else may want stuff.
Tom, you're a numbers guy. Can you think of anything else that we would?
What does it cost to build a new school?
Well, we have the square foot, right?
So based on current approximations, I would say approximately $850 to 1,000 square foot. Just based on whatever he's going.
850 to 1,000 per square foot?
Per square foot.
For 850, 4,000 square feet. The way you just said it, I wasn't.
850 to $1,000 per.
Per one square foot, okay.
Based on numbers.
All the stuff, okay.
And what would be the size of a school just to fit the number of kids per state standard?
So if we were looking at.
Doesn't mean that's what we would build.
A high school, and so they have a, they have an element in their, on their website that's talking about space standards, and they're approximating that it's about 178. And there's some play in this number based on the type of programming you do, there's a number, it's like the formula, it's a big factor in there. But about 178 per each student for, per square foot.
178 square feet?
Yes, per student.
So can you do the math for us?
Yeah, so if you're looking at like a 1,600 square, or 1,600 student building, that's about approximately 285,000 square feet. And if you get about $1,000 per square foot, it's 285 million dollars to build new. If you looked at the current reimbursement rate for building new without any legislation of extra reimbursement at that 26.79%, you receive about 72 million, 76 million in return. So it would be about, these are all very rough numbers, about 208 million dollars of city funds type of programming you actually want in schools. There could be some variation.
Construction.
And I think if you.
And when we actually build. So if this is four years from now, those costs can escalate, so.
20 years from now.
20 years from now, yeah.
And I, I don't know, I don't know that I have ever seen a school building project where they come in at what the cost that they, that they think they're going to, I think it always ends up being.
And so I think we're getting to kind of the other side of the, the two column chart, right? So if we're looking at this and thinking this might be a solution for the next 20 years, and not asking you to, to do the mental math now, but it would also be beneficial to have the rough math of what, what renovations we need to do to maintain current services, let alone before you add anything to law and foreign over the next 20 years. Right? So we're comparing closer apples to apples versus.
Well, but the 285 would be.
A new school.
Would be a new school, but.
Plus acquisition cost and land.
But that would be a school that would be more 21st century, more.
Would accommodate only programming.
Right. That, that's a big number, but if you don't put it in perspective of what we need to incur at least to maintain the status quo.
If you don't do that, what's the cost?
Yeah.
So comparing it to what's in the Bureau Veritas reports.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
You got to remember, when you, if you build a new high school, you gain back two relatively new buildings to some repurpose, so.
That's when the cost starts coming in at the middle school level.
Which also plays into, you have to work with the state on this, but you're not closing the school, so you have to still pay back any kind of reimbursement you've received over the years, because it's not being shut down completely.
This, what you just said brings to an important point that I think we need generally, especially at the middle school and elementary school level, is what is like, where are we on those payment scales for each of the schools? Because that was a conversation we had when the conversation regarding Harborside came up a couple of years ago of how it really wasn't a savings because there was still carrying costs that we needed to pay back.
So Sean, it sounds like you do have a lot of the data that the board is going to need to present to the community. So can we ask that, do you know, do you have a sense of how it would be helpful for the board to look at that information? The comparisons, the side by side, one, and this doesn't include land, that 285.
That's just build costs.
Right, that's not including land.
There were other variables you just mentioned as well. Layered.
Right.
Yeah, and that, and that's. That 850 to 1,000 was what we're generally seeing. What I did was I pulled a list of projects that are on the priority list for the last three or four years to give some data points of what other schools are costing. And in just recent years, 23, 24, on both those priority lists, that's where those numbers were in the high nines, up close to 1,000 per square foot. And even just when you look back to like 21, 2021 Farmington High School, the approximate cost was 141 million for 271,000 square feet, and that came out to about $520 per square foot. So in those years.
It's escalated to now.
It hasn't nearly gone.
They had to go back to the town to ask for money.
And they did, and they did have to go back. And this number here, I factored in as the going back and asking for more.
Yeah, because it was done after COVID.
Correct.
And numbers went up and they had to go back to the town for more money. I mean, I, I just did a quick check back to the Bureau Veritas reports and we're running about 60 million per school for reno at law and foreign.
Sorry.
I didn't hear that.
Sorry, click, so 60 million per school, per year, for five years or 10 years, sorry?
This was over the 10 years.
Okay.
They, they had a, he came up with a measure, a figure of merit for each building as to what cost that he used to keep it going and it was like a factor that.
FCI, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you look at the numbers that he had in there for cost per, per square foot? And it makes sense to you? Because I never got a chance to rationalize.
The FCI was based on $700 per square foot at Jonathan Law. So I just have.
Because that, you know, that, if you change that number, that, that factor moves all over the place, so.
Correct, right.
Right. So I'm looking at 59, thinking, oh, it feels low.
Yeah, yeah.
He's using 700 per square feet at that time.
Yeah.
Because if you're going to, you know, we want to share something with, we got to make, with the public, we got to make sure it makes sense. And just, if you just came up with a really good realistic number, we got to make sure that anything that would.
And the concern with that is these are just estimates. Because so many things can change at any moment, so.
If their estimates are all based on the same foundational assumptions, then they still turn out to be apples to apples, even if those estimates are wrong.
Yeah.
And that's what we need is the comparison purpose.
The analysis was a non-intrusive analysis, so no one, you know, drill a hole into the wall.
Right.
Because as soon as you get into a 1950s building.
No surprises ever. Definitely no surprises.
Not like any renovations I've ever watched.
Sean, it almost seems to me that one needs to do it with 2,025 dollars, what each of those different designs, too middle, too high, one high, and then figure out what comes in 10 years and what comes in 20 years. Because if Farmington doubled from 21 to 23, what's it going to do in 20 years? We've seen it with our schools that we've built. That would argue to put the, the hits early as opposed to having it late, because it's going to be double or triple.
Can you say that again? Farmington is different.
Put what early versus late? Put what early versus?
If inflation's going to hit at 2, 3%, the, the bigger expense.
Okay, I understand.
Probably should go early. Because if you're putting it late, it's going to be at 3, 2, 3%.
We still need to decide.
Sure, but we're coming closer to two models. And if we come up with, with the two models, what the cost in 2025 to do all of it would be, no intention to do all of it. But then we look at that continuum and say, wait a second, where do they go? And how much do they cost to?
But you could also choose to go out big. I mean, if we're thinking about anything goes right now, you could also go out and build three new elementary schools all at once and then do another three if you're going with the six model. Because if I'm looking at Norwich built a 548 capacity elementary school last year and it cost them 76 million dollars. So for the price of 210, that buys you three elementary schools, right? So you could also go, we're going all in on three elementary schools, find three pieces of land, or build it in the backyard of another elementary. I mean, all of that has to be flushed out, but, so that's another way also to go at it, if the board so chooses to start at a specific level, if not the high school, so.
And those elementary schools are essentially just rooms, because you're not adding a lot of technology that you would add into the high schools. I mean, you might have.
Technology in elementary.
Yeah, but not like the.
Your.
The science lab.
Not the science lab.
Type thing.
Well, we have science lab at elementary, but they're just different.
They're different.
So no, the specialized spaces are not the same as middle and high. Hence, the square footage cost is different to build an elementary compared to high. You still have high cost in a elaborate media center with more kid-friendly furniture that gets to be a little more expensive. You have little people rooms, that's pretty specialized in that area. And then new for us would be a cafeteria separate from a gym with a stage in one of those spaces, so. So, but you're right, Ms. Irving, definitely not as specialized as middle and high.
The other advantage of going with the big project upfront is that you then have the shadow of the retiring debt to build the other things. So that's just what, it's just another consideration. What information do you need to essentially populate a timeline like this? So if you were given buildings, little pieces of paper that represent buildings, and were asked to put building projects on a timeline.
I didn't ask you to do that.
Well, I need to know what the plan is before I do that personally.
Well, how do you get to a plan if you don't figure out when you want to do what?
Can we still request more information?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm saying what information do you need, still need?
I think we really need to come to the one to two high, one or high school, two, one high school or two high school, and then you populate from there. And it's easier to go into a yearly breakdown, because that might lead to some of these other considerations of what happens at the middle school level. Because I'm just talking, is if, say, we went from three to two middle schools, what would need to be done at the two middle schools to consolidate that? That may be a short-term, quick project, five years, but if we go with multiple middle, elementary schools or high school, that could be the 10-year as we determine space, time, sizing, whatever, all of those things.
To, 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 that reminded me, one of the conversations in the group I was in, it had an educator who was in a different district, and what she was talking about to exactly that point is, the high school question, one or two, seems like once you answer that, that cascades and helps either answer questions or create questions, because it is that cascade of if you did one high school, then do you repurpose the two existing high schools as the middle school? And then do you repurpose the existing middle schools as elementary schools? Obviously, that all needs retrofit and all those other things. But you can't ever consider repurposing the existing middle schools to elementary schools if you don't have that cascade that moves through the entire system.
Here, can I just nuance your question for them?
Yeah, please.
Because that'll be helpful to us on what we're going to do before the next time we talk about this. Not is it only what the board needs, but could we also add a sub-layered, what would the community need from us next time we're in front of them and, you know, whether it's a community conversation or whatever format you're choosing? So it's not just what you need, but I distinctly heard from the conversation in January that they felt like they needed information. So could we consider both lenses in that answer?
Please, yeah.
What I heard from them was the, the financial pieces, is what I remember.
I feel like for me to finish my thought from a while ago, which was the same thing that Mike was saying, but tied in with the financial question you were asking, so bringing those together. For the financial information that I feel like I would need, yes, everything cascades from the high school, I've been saying that, I totally agree with that, it's a thing. But to figure out which shape these various options can go in realistically, there are some specific variable costs that I think are important to know. One, what would be the cost to the two existing middle schools if they had to be renovated to accommodate the students from Harborside? Period. However, that has to get answered, however you want to justify that answer, however, whatever the explanations are, what's that cost? What does it cost to east shore, what's it cost to west shore if they had to be renovated in order to accommodate? Period. What is the cost if we were to take the two high schools and make them middle schools? That came up as well. What would be the cost to update, change, renovate, whatever, the two high schools if they were to become middle schools? That's four different cost pieces. We just answered the question about construction, period, on potentially building an entirely new school, but you mentioned a couple of other variables that fed into that potential overall cost as well. If there are others of those, once you have more than like two minutes to think about it while we're like all staring at you, then an option to adjust that as a fifth. If there are others of those, once you have more than like two minutes to think about it while we're like all staring at you, then an option to adjust that as a fifth piece to this. And then at the elementary level, we talked about here's a cost to build a new elementary school. If we were to, because there, again, going back to permutations, there were lots of options of four elementary schools, F O R, elementary schools, building new versus renovating over different times. I think just knowing the basic, from a building blocks perspective, the cost to actually do a new elementary school. And then we have the cost to renovate each of the existing elementary schools to bring them up to standards, so we have that information already. But I think the the new build and the update to accommodate major shifts are the pieces for me that are missing at the moment.
So it's the cost to go from two existing middle schools to absorb Harperside in moment? Cost to make two high schools into middle schools, cost to make two middle schools into elementaries, is that, no, you didn't say that.
No, I don't think that's realistic. Oh, I he said that, I didn't say that.
Yeah, that was one of the conversations in groups, and it can be you can also be, the answer could also be, that's unrealistic, but that was one of the questions posed.
Like, what's the cost to shrink everything by fifteen inches?
Yeah, there was like, it was the, yeah, making it accessible to little people.
Plus, that they would be huge schools. I mean, they're big, they're big schools.
Don't make it my idea.
No, I know.
Four hundred kids or so now, though. I mean, they're.
Well, those elementary, those middle schools were built to have over six hundred kids in them.
So why do they need to be grown to accommodate Harperside?
And shifts in enrollment.
Because they were built five hundred years ago, when kids sat on each other for class.
So I know I'm missing one of the or one of the things that you said you needed, it's cost to to a middle to absorb Harperside.
The two high schools to middle schools and the cost to build the new high school.
Oh.
We got to that two oh eight, but I'm reserving the right for Mr. Brennan to add some cost to that, if you factor some other variables that might be relevant to us.
That's the bare minimum cost.
Two eighty five million.
Two million.
I don't know, I I know that. I'm also giving you the option to add some stuff to that.
Maybe two million.
Not married to two eighty five.
We're holding to all our numbers as estimates, because we're not architects and engineers.
Build a new elementary school, which he said it's seventy six million, he gave us that for a five hundred and forty eight kids school was just what somebody did. And then I think you said was the last piece there.
To renovate to standards.
Renovate the elementary schools to standards.
That was in, yeah, that was in Veritas School High School.
And you say, I wrote, you have that, right?
It's the update to the high schools to become middle schools and the update to the middle schools to accommodate. Those were big questions.
And then also doing the updating the Bureau Veritas cost estimates, so they're standardized across the board. So if their if their basis is seventy five dol- seven, seven fifty per square foot, when we're actually looking at like a thousand per square feet, that's not the apples to apples.
I missed the beginning of that, and it's not right.
It's the the standardization.
Say that, well, you say it.
Yeah, the updating the Bureau Veritas is like square footed, cost per square foot estimate, so that it's the same as.
We'll get back to that.
Everything else you're doing on it, so.
So you're.
And I like your number better than mine. I'd rather do like the eight fifty to a thousand than the seven fifty, as we're trying to estimate costs at scale.
So let me just make sure that the board will be asking the town also to identify whether there is available land in order to answer that question?
And and I guess I'd love to tease out who in the town we're asking, because like I I think that we've talked about it, but it feels inappropriate to undermine like, we can make whatever decision we want. And then it goes to another board, which one of the members is in the audience, and there's also the mayor, like, there's a there's many, many pieces to all of this stuff.
And there's negotiation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and and there is also an awkwardness about, you know, dealing with the negotiation wide open. So I guess the question is, how how does a board find out what land is available?
And do we need to?
Yeah, we need to, we just say, hey, if we wanna do this, we need forty acres of land.
Here's the plan.
Forty acres isn't available, and that.
If we were to all agree that we need a one high school, then we say, go figure it out.
But I think available is relative, I mean, so I've been involved professionally with some citing of entities, and usually that's when you you don't usually go to the town. Usually work with a a commercial realtor or something like that, and then they reverse engineer and talk to all that stuff. But in the we're negotiating publicly, maybe against ourselves in these conversations, and so there's you, it it is a challenging thing to do. And I don't know how other communities do it.
For one thing, it can be in private, it's not me, as you can't discuss real estate prices in public, or the price goes through the roof. So all of that, and and I guess my perspective again is, you you need that land either now, five years from now, ten years from now. You better be asking the town that we're gonna need so much here and so much there, and whatever you buy is not like like locking up the wings.
Okay, so you're not asking them, and we we I'm glad to clarify that, because I think we had said earlier that you would be asking the town about land.
So we're not asking anyone if there's any possible land?
There's like, so I would say from my from my perspective, there's always land that might be cross prohibitive, but again, we don't want to go too far down the path of negotiating against ourselves. So if you identify a site where you know that as soon as that site is identified, all of the parcels around there, or even those parcels, they're they're gonna hold on to them and try and extract every dollar possible.
I had thirty five acres land, I'd be very excited about this conversation.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Laura and Ms. Speller's point on the questions she was asking. There was also a number of questions of maintaining three middle school and keeping them and cost to make them equal, because there was the thirty to sixty million cost.
Same thing we did on the high school question, on the middle schools as well, what's the cost to maintain three?
Maintain three or bring them all to.
At the same per square footage updated numbers.
And that is, I mean, all all of this is really in the Bureau Veritas report, right? So you can get that eas- that's easily put together.
Not all of it, like closing Harperside, adding wings to east shore, west shore is not.
It's not in there.
The renovation costs are, but at a different square footage, so we're asking for that update, so we get apples to apples. Regardless of what the end answer ends up being, as long as we can compare on the whole round number.
But the Bureau Veritas makes the presumption that all the other schools are gonna stay even, so that doesn't mean that the Bureau Veritas numbers are accurate if we close Harperside, is what you're saying.
But that, there was no way that was being entertained back in the cover. It was just, what would it take to bring this school up to standard?
Those were just renovation.
Right, so so essentially, the Bureau, like, yeah, the Bureau Veritas will help us like, look at it to bring everyone to same level, but won't be able to, yes.
Gives us a good comparison.
Go the next step of if we close Harperside, it would cost X dollars to put, west shore needs this much, east shore needs this to bring them to there.
No, that that's a really good point. We're not the experts saying we just, we just need a wing at each middle school.
We're just throwing that out into the universe as an example, it it could be that.
It could be.
We have the right footprint, but we need to rent out this room and this room in order to get you a ticket over. So.
Right.
We need to give this over to an expert, because I'm I'm looking at about twelve hundred, I have some of these reports up as we're talking. So the highest enrollment we have in ten years in the middle schools is twelve forty four, divided by two is six hundred.
Yeah.
Now, they may have been made for six hundred in a a different educational model. So we could probably fit all the kids in there, but remember, good use of an educational building does not exceed around eighty five percent utilization, right? So we have to, when we're using the vocabulary out and about, just because it can hold six hundred doesn't mean we put six hundred kids in there. We should be putting about eighty five percent plus the programming that is specialized spaces Ms. Irving was speaking of. So I'm a little worried about just assuming that we have those two schools and we're gonna put six hundred kids in each one of those.
Right.
So we'd like to go to the experts, whoever that might be, and say, all right, so if we had two, only east shore, west shore, and we had six hundred children, can you take a look at these buildings now?
Right.
So almost like another walkthrough, and say, what would you do with these kids and this programming? So probably need to go and find someone to do that for us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That makes a lot of sense.
I think that it's also true at the elementary school level.
Well, we we're hoping to hear from you guys that one of your next steps is you want us to start looking for someone to help us with this, that is, who don't have masters in education.
Well, that that's that was the point I was trying to make before, but I think when we get to the elementary piece, we need.
Architectural, engineering, demographic kind of assistance. Someone to come, take a look at where do our children live right now, like, let's just lay all the kids out, little people out, between the ages of three and eleven, and see how they're spread out, and then take a look at the plots of land that we have and where the schools are located. Take a look at lines and start saying, okay, in ten years, it makes sense that you have these six schools in these general areas, right? That that needs different expertise than Sean and Anna and Steve, okay.
And it's a multidisciplinary team, like, so there's, you're not gonna find, you're not gonna find that one person that's gonna be able to give you this answer. It's really gotta be a a firm that has a team of people with them that have these various backgrounds so that they can come together with that.
Can we move into that piece without having a specific number in mind?
Well, we were hoping you would lean toward maybe two approaches that we could start working with more definitively for you. So it sounded like we're we're flushing out one and two high schools, that is clear. Two and three middle schools, that sounded clear. The elementary isn't clear.
Six or seven elementary.
Six or seven, yeah, not four, not eight, I know that. Five was thrown around, and then six, six, I think, is for sure one.
Ms. Glennon, when you were doing numbers a while ago, and you were looking at elementary projections and dividing it by six and seven, can you remind us what those numbers were?
Yes, I can. So assuming an enrollment projection in for pre K five in thirty three, thirty four, twenty thirty three, twenty thirty four, it's so far away. Total is two six six two, two thousand six hundred and sixty two, so dividing by eight. Okay, we won't do eight, because we said no eight, so dividing by seven, it's three hundred and eighty. Dividing by six, it's four hundred and forty four. And dividing by, let's see, five, it's five hundred and thirty two, and two fifths.
Like our F T S.
And is there an ideal number from your perspective with the five, six, and seven? If we're looking at three thirty and seven, let's say, and four forty four and six, if I'm reading that right.
So Mary and Jack, did some of that work for us?
That was in the survey part earlier. What were those ranges?
It was. The at the ideal numbers, I have that here.
There was a range.
Yep.
There was an ideal range that people liked, and then there was the accident.
Oh.
The range.
Yes. Oh, that's right, yeah.
There was the standard ideal range.
Ideal school size, for an elementary is typically, the typical enrollment range is three hundred to six hundred in Connecticut.
Say that again, Ms. Glennon.
An elementary school with three hundred to six hundred student range typically strikes a balance between providing resources and maintaining a personalized learning environment.
I'm gonna ask the annoying question, if we asked that question a decade ago, would it have been the same census per per school? Or has that best practice evolved in a decade?
Can you repeat that?
So if we asked that question a decade ago, would the answer still be the same, or as we're trying to future proof and plan out the years? Yeah, what would it, what's, I guess, the trajectory over time on the answer to that best building size? Right, and so like, if if a decade ago is roughly the same, that's, or two decades ago is roughly the same, but like, as we're trying to plan out for twenty years from now, is there, is there a trajectory that that answer is going?
Are elementary schools getting smaller or bigger?
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, I think that's a great question, because I'm not sure if it'll be more one on one and internships. I don't know if it's gonna get smaller or bigger, it's also speculative for twenty years from now, what what schools like.
We had explosions in enrollment about twenty years ago, explosions, so most of our schools were stuffed to the gills.
And then they became empty.
And then they became empty.
The whole line was incredible.
I mean, Landry's was six fifty.
I would just say that I, there is such a thing as too small. And I feel like in education, we're watching our kids have more specialized needs, and particularly in the area, social, emotional, mental health, well being. And if you have larger schools, you just need to make sure that you're gonna staff it, that you're not just gonna put one social worker in there, and I'm thinking, one school psych, one school counselor. So the larger, the larger the team is gonna have to be, the adult team, the support. So I'd hate for us to build so large, because we're we're enamored with the idea of a brand new building, and not be able to create senses of community for our little people, and they're not just for our eight year olds or for eighteen year olds, too. So I know we've been primarily silent on our preferences, but I just worry about too large of a high school for our teenagers to get, you know, slip through the cracks and hide. So I just think that we should consider the essence of community and belonging as we're building schools. So I'd like to do a little bit, some mathematics around, if we have average class sizes of the elementary, we don't like to go above twenty and twenty three, right? Those are our class size guidelines, and I I didn't bring it up fast enough before I started talking, but I think we're around eighteen, nineteen, average class size. So if if that's the case, and I love the idea of having four sections in each grade, because it just creates nice collaboration for teachers, you have lots of option to split kids up. So I wanna do the math, if you have six grades at eighteen per class, you know, I just wanna do that math, but that can get me, if you give me like ten to fifteen seconds. But if you do eighteen kids times six, twenty four, so that's four thirty two. So you have eighteen children in each room, that's average class size right now, if you wanna maintain that. And there are four sections in each grade, six grades, I'm not counting pre K, because those numbers should be a little bit lower. That's twenty four sections in a school, twenty four times eighteen is four thirty two. Ms. Glennon, what number got, what, how many schools?
Six.
Six. Gives you four, but wait a minute, we don't want to build to capacity, right? So then seven.
Well, but the that, the numbers that I gave you were include pre K.
Okay.
Projections.
So I would, I would say.
Based on the SLAM report.
If it's allowable for us to throw in, I prefer us to live between the six and seven school. Six would do us just fine, seven would be great, because I also don't want to give the next generation of Board of Ed and administrators the problem of, oh, my God, we just got a boom, where are we gonna put the kids, right?
Like, you'd rather have extra capacity than.
Yeah, because we also don't know the future of preschool. We we have to have a program conversation, not during L R F P, but another day on, so what what is our sentiment around preschool? Do we want to take in more four year olds or not? So that could also be adding to our numbers.
But you also have the potential of reusing a school that you might retire for, so there's a lot of different things.
Like an early childhood center.
Right, there's a lot of different things.
So you build six K fives and one early childhood center, so.
So should we take the five off the table at this point, or people comfortable with it?
No, we did.
You thought we already did?
I already did.
I think we said six, seven. Oh, you know, you're right, we did.
We're going in circles.
No, that's right, it was just that we got the enrollment.
I personally, based on those numbers and based on that, which was very helpful, thank you for running those and bringing that back up. I'm okay taking six off, which is where I probably have been leaning originally, just to make sure we have the additional building capacity to accommodate.
Well, if we went with seven, too, with consultant, that would give us a higher cost number ultimately, right? And if it was too much money, we could look at moving down to six.
But I think the question really more is like, looking at our current eight schools that we have in elementary schools, we have two elementary schools that have not been renovated at all at this moment, current moment. So it's a question of, are we gonna go to six in an interim, and then maybe build another school, and we'll start rotating through them? And what's the, how do we do that? Do we, like, how do we go through that process right now? I don't think it's a definitive. There could be a period of time where it's six, while we consolidate and build a new school, for example.
But our goal, that is our target goal, six or seven. And then we figure out the workback plan of, what do you renovate, what do you rebuild over time?
The consultant, right?
Yeah, I don't think we have enough information to, to drop from six to seven at, at this moment.
Yeah, I think they're both on the table, six, four, seven.
But do we need to give you one as a direction to go in?
No. I'm thinking it's a one, two high school, two, three middle, six, seven elementary. And is that where we're landing right now?
Yes.
Consultant.
Team.
Uh, we'll just, we'll throw it out to them and see.
See what happens.
If they say, no way, you need to give us more some. I thi, I think that's the place to start.
Any other information that you think you're gonna need?
I think for just table sightings, sorry to cut you off, is, what are timelines? Of like, generality of like, we decide today, this is the plan. It'll take us eight years to do, to break down, say, a high school or X, Y, and Z. Like, what are general timelines?
Specifically, how long does it take to build an elementary or middle or high?
I believe, Ms. Glennon's talked about it, but those would be a cool factoid to extract and put in the executive summary that's either, like, if we could circulate that, like when we announced, like, say, here's the one-page, and especially if it's a electronic document, like a PDF with hyperlinks, if they wanna go deeper, right? Like, it'd be nice to have that then, and then also at the day of, if you didn't.
I think it also depends, like, are you just going to a piece of land and building and not having to swing kids in and out? And that's a different build than tearing down part of the building, building, swinging kids in and out.
Well, it might be accommodation of both.
Yeah. But I think.
I'm not sure about how to answer that timeline.
And then, the only other question, it would not answer that exactly. But if there would be a way to provide as a reference point the cost and the timeline for like the Plattech renovation, since it, obviously it's state, it's not us, but it's something that people can see. It might help ground them in the and there are obviously different layers that they did, different hurdles they wouldn't have had to go through, as we would have to go through. But using Plattech as that anchor of, they decided this, it took this much to build it, it costs this much to build it, they're ripping it down. It, it's nice, it's probably the closest that anyone in Milford gets to see on a fairly regular basis on a school construction.
So the cost and the timeline of the.
Plattech, yeah. With a giant asterisk, I believe that started before COVID, so, you know, obviously everything is the pre-COVID dollars.
And it's a highly specialized school.
Right.
Like, every space is specialized.
Yeah.
Um, just to clarify, we're gonna have another workshop before we get to the next community conversation.
If it is the community conversation you'd like to do at that point.
Whatever.
Whenever.
I mean, if we do something on March first, we will have another.
It does seem, though, that we need the board to make a decision about what they would like to do next.
Like, could we, um, under the next steps, could we do a little bit of, um, so if, if the board's desire is to have something drafty by end of April, beginning of May, is that still the desire?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I wasn't listening. Sorry.
I appreciate honesty.
I was looking at it for something.
We just say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. If the board's desire is to have something drafty by the end of April and May, could we do a little backwards planning with you guys on if that is still your goal? In February, March, April, three months, right? It's right here, right in front of us. What do you wanna get done in those three months so that we know how to maneuver dates and agendas? So, um, is it, uh, you desire the board to have another interaction with the community?
I would say yes.
Yeah. Um, and we could help, start to define what that looks like. It sounded like the community conversation format was a success. Would that be an agreeable format?
As you're looking at dates, if we could look at something at four and high to grab that side of town, that'd be.
We were planning to do that.
Fantastic, thank you.
We were gonna bounce over.
In terms of, in terms of a workback and sequencing different things, having that next community conversation at a point when we actually have new answers and information to share.
Yeah.
Feels like a very obvious thing to say, but feels also like it should be said out loud. Like, if we're not going to, so basically.
We're agreement.
We've thrown out the idea of March first. If we're not gonna have any of this information by March first, then there's no point in having the same conversation again.
Correct.
And where does this consultant come into the timeline? Is this before the next community conversation? Is it after?
It would have to be, they're the ones producing the new number estimates.
I would think it would have to be beforehand.
I think part of it is before and part of it, like, the after. I think in terms of the actual laying out of potential plan.
Right. It really depends on the scope of the work, like, how deep we ask them to dive.
I mean, what I would hope is that by the next time we bring the public back together, we would have narrowed it down to a couple of very clear options, that this is where we're at. Whether it's, um, you know, one, one high school, two high schools, and then, you know, whatever feeds down.
At the, at the moment, we still have eight variations that we've come up with, because we have one or two, two or three, six or seven. And so if the consultant is going to determine the variable cost points that we talked about of each of those variations before, and we need that information in order to then narrow it down to either a six, or a three, or a two, or a seven, then we won't be able to, we need consultant, have the data, workshop the data, then narrow it down, then have the community conversation about the narrowed-down options with associated costs.
So let me just ask a pivotal point in, in what we're both saying. Do you believe, you plural, that you need to narrow it down before you get in front of the community again? Or can you put one, two, two, three, six, seven in front of them?
I think it'd be less.
Not if it doesn't have costs. I think it has to have costs, and ideally, it would be narrowed down both.
Okay, so you need the, an action step here is before you get to the community, you need more information to narrow down the approaches.
Yes.
Okay, so that, we need a little bit of time to find out how fast we can work with the consultant before we, we want everyone to pencil in March one, if that is still agreeable. But we just need to see what we could, how fast we can move on that.
The only caveat I would offer is, I think the community wants you to come back from leaving two options, high school, one or two.
Yeah.
I don't think they want you to have made that decision yet.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
I think that that's.
That's the big question. I think there's a last question about the middle school.
I think the middle school piece, I feel, is more internal, because I, I really, you know, I think I heard more clearly that public was okay with two, even in the survey and the focus groups, that the public was okay with two middle schools.
So I got a question, so off of our budget discussion, should we not be talking about the academy in here, or no?
I think that comes in later, the same as, to me, that's the same as the preschool piece. It's a, you know, programmatic piece that is, kinda stands by itself.
Do we not want their building numbers? If we're gonna get all of these other numbers, you know, we get the cost.
We have the numbers.
So we have all that?
Yeah, we have all, yeah, they're part of the.
All of the numbers are fine?
So the question of the consultants, if it helps in prioritizing, given the fact that we don't need the consultant to give us information on opt, on the one and two high schools before we go back to the community, because that piece is still gonna be on the table, but we would like to be able to narrow down the question of, maybe we still go to the, we can decide if we still wanna go to the community with two or three middle schools, or if we wanna make that choice. But choosing between two and three and choosing between six and seven are very specific board decision points that have to be made. And both of those sound like they need consultant numbers.
Okay.
So if it's possible to prioritize the work with a consultant in order to stay on this timeline we've talked about, we don't need them to do any of the high school-related questions right now. We need the questions that help us decide two to three and six to seven.
Got it.
One other question that might be able to answer now, but I think being able to speak clearly to, as we're talking about property, and if memory serves, if we no longer need a building for education purposes, it goes back to the city, and then the city decides what to do with it. So unlike selling a house, right? Like, if you move from one house to the other, you can sell an asset, have some capital to invest in the other one. We don't have that choice in this context, is that correct? So I think maybe putting that in the executive summary, kind of, make sure everyone's on the same page.
That was a big question that had come up, of what happens to the land.
Yeah.
It's the city land.
Right.
No matter what.
Unless we have a different educational purpose for it, right?
I think just make sure that's one of the, the level-setting in the executive summary.
You decide, you're gonna use it for educational purposes, right? Um, okay, so I'm gonna push our thinking a little bit more. So let's just say March first happens. Again, with the, let's just call it May first for now. That deadline, May first? After March first, we'll get feedback like this. You guys will go back to the drawing table, so we'll have some workshop-y time with Mary and Jack again. Here's a question. Will you bring your approach that you are going to eventually say, yes, that's our plan, back to the public?
I think we need to do that.
I think we need to do it, whether it's the same structure as the community conversation, because at that point, we'll have an idea, just won't be written up.
So two more engagements with the community.
At least.
The next one is a community conversation, we know that. That other one, we don't have to define right now. But we just know that there will be a time where you, plural, will bring to the board what you think is gonna be the plan.
To the public.
To the public for input.
Yep.
We just don't know what that's called or what will look like yet. Okay? Someone said at least two.
I think two is, I don't see why you'd need at least.
That worried me a little bit. What, I think, Mr. Smith, I'll call you out, I think it was you.
Yeah. There's a lot of work, you know, I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm naive, but see, like, there's a lot of work, and it's a really aggressive timeline is my, to, to fully, for me personally, to fully wrap my arms around and feel like we've done our job of engaging the community, two is very aggressive. And e, even just not, like, it's, it's a self-imposed timeline, I won't.
It's two more, though, so it's three altogether.
Right, but I mean, there, there's, there, there are a lot of.
Focus group, survey.
Anyway, and, but also just speaking for me personally, like, I, I would be, I would be happy to do individual, like, because this is a long-range plan and involves the entire community. We've had one that was at a high school, we'll have another one hopefully at a high school. Like, there's, there's a lot of complexity, a lot of change that everyone in our community will be feeling, regardless of how we make this decision. And I wouldn't be opposed to doing a community conversation in every elementary, middle school to make sure people are understanding. And I'd rather over-communicate than be very aggressive, but I'm just.
So could we, um, put a pause on that? In, in education, we say, can we put that in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Um, and see, let's just say the second community engagement opportunity is like April first. Well, I'll just make that, I just made that date up, haven't talked to anybody about it. Uh, and we see that there's an outpour of the community, and there's great engagement, and then maybe that will allay some of your fears around, we didn't engage enough. And then, so I give ourselves permission to add at that point if we feel like we still need community voice. Okay? So, but I'm hearing two for right now, is what people?
Just to double down a little bit before we move off of that idea. I think the idea, that's, we're sort of in a discussion phase right now, getting feedback, community conversations. When the board has an idea of a plan, but it's not yet voted, signed, locked on paper, there's a window in there where the second thing that we're talking about here will land, and that becomes more of an education awareness moment, an opportunity. In that same window, education awareness, opportunity, phase, I think it, I agree that it does make sense coordinating with the leaders in each of the buildings, the principals in each of the buildings, to find a time to take that plan to their individual communities.
So I probably won't, I probably won't put that on principals, they haven't been part of this process. Um, it's, it's not their work, so.
Not on them to introduce it and to discuss it, but to get their buy-in in terms of gathering the community so that it can then be addressed. Present it to.
Well, we'll have to work on the nuance if you wanna go to each school community. I think that's our work, not necessarily a principal. Principal could send an email, put it in a weekly file.
Right, just we're thinking that the communities and the parents and the families at those schools are more likely to respond to them, organizing something like that for them potentially. Still fine with it being in the parking lot. But I think that that is an idea that should not be too far back in the law.
Now, I, I, what I, I think I was putting in the parking lot was this idea of a third engagement. Which is up to the board, if you wanna do that. I think that was what I was saying specifically, when Mr. Smith was saying, hey, that we might need more engagement. We might get to that second community engagement and say, wow, we, we need to engage more. So, I think the parking lot part is, and you guys tell me, if you want a third, we'll, we'll go ahead and schedule a third right now, so.
I think, I mean, just to kind of add to the, the brainstorming, I think one of the things that, that we really do need to make sure that we're doing is that idea of engaging the public as much as possible, right? And, and I don't know whether, uh, multiple events is the way to do it or not. Um, I think that we need to remember that when we're talking about community engagement, it's not just the families that are in our schools. I mean, yes, they are an important audience. But let's look at the timeline when we're gonna be making these changes. The majority of these kids could be just about out, or if not totally out of school by now. But we have a lot of other groups in the Milford community that we need, need to make sure that we've properly educated them. So when we're talking about community, while, yes, our school population is so very important, there's also a broader community that I think that we need to make sure that they are engaged as well.
Yeah, I think the, the high school piece, too, I mean, 'cause you tied in the high, you know, you met, we've met at the high schools, we should go into the other buildings. I think those are just community centers. I mean, we were, we chose them just for their, they have enough space, they have the right location. I think that, you know, again, kinda to dovetail off of what Ms. Boynton said, it's, this is a community discussion. It needs to involve the broader community. And I think for transparency, it, it, as far as the, the conversing part and the feedback and that type of thing, it needs to be done in a transparent way that, so that everybody is hearing what the conversations are. If it's gonna go into our decision-making. I think once a decision is made and we need to go to the education piece, that's a different process, perhaps. But, um, while we're taking feedback in from people so that we can make our decision, I think it's important that it be done in a setting where everyone can hear the outcomes so that it, it's, it is transparent.
So of, of the attendees at the community conversation, eighty percent of the people who said, I have a child in school today, eighty percent of them said that their child was an elementary student. So it's pretty, compared to thirty-five middle school, twenty-five percent high school.
Okay.
In terms of the conversation, setting aside the roadshow parking lot idea, I think it does make sense to do a community conversation when we are, once we have narrowed down the options but not finalized them.
Yes.
And then I think it makes sense to do another one, whether we're calling it second or third, I lost the bubble. But to, to do another one, once we, as a board, think we have narrowed it down to something, but it has not yet been written in stone and completely finalized and locked down, so that at that point, everyone can give feedback on the one thing. When I say everyone, the community at large can give feedback on the one thing. And we're educating on what that one thing is and why.
So if I could, timeline, you wanna go, Kristi? No, I just wanna build on that, because at some point, there needs to be a marketing piece to this. We've done two years of work. This is where we've come, we've taken X, Y, and Z, and we've taken community feedback. And now, this is a good decision. I left on the Saturday Jonathan Law, where I went to high school, and I'm thinking to myself, if I had a child going into school or in grammar school right now, one brand-new freaking high school, you know? I mean, think about that, you know? Like, that would be so exciting.
Yeah.
And I think that's the energy and the decision-making that we need to convey, is like, this is a good plan, because two. because two years of work have brought us here and we're lockstep in. This is a ton of work and it's synthesized.
You're going to be the spokesperson with all the energy.
Oh, I'm not a marketing good girl. I can do that.
But I think doing, doing that, while we still have given ourselves three weeks before we're writing down the final thing, signing our names to it, turning it in, is a smart idea.
So I'm just going to timeline this.
And then out of that could be all the other stuff.
So February, we're working with a consultant. And you, somewhere in February, we're hoping that we're going to workshop again with more information and possibly narrowing things down because y'all said it was too much to bring to the community, right?
Yes.
You writing this down?
Yes.
Because I'm just free-flowing right now. March 1st penciled in. We're going to do a community conversation at Ford. And we're going to get more input now on the reduced approaches. And in March, this board's going to workshop again and take that feedback and try to get to the one-ish approach. And then take that one approach and go back to the community, whatever that looks like, and say, community, Board of Ed is thinking about this one approach. Can you give us feedback on this? You guys take the feedback and in April, workshop that again. Determine if you need more face-to-face time with the community and then hopefully land the plane by May 1st.
And that April-ish time, we have to at some point insert a timeline into this plan, right?